Ready for that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no report on session TV and now I'd like to vote please to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
With no changes then a vote please on the agendas presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Carrie Spivey. We have public comment for items that are not on the agenda? No one out there, alright? So, most of your reports.
So grateful not to be sick when so many are. Happy to be back in Raleigh, so my students did actually say, of course my special ed kids, that they were happy to be coming back to school and they missed being at school with us, so that's nice. We enjoyed the holiday party, thank you for your participation in that. Everyone really enjoyed the little gift, the day, before we left for holiday break, my special ed kids offered to deliver the soup terrines to anyone on campus who hadn't gotten yet, so they were the little elves. That was very nice. It was nice to to roll our ways into the holidays with those good feelings and being able to be together with everybody in here, so thank you.
Mark, CSCE.
Well, happy new year and we look forward to the rest of the school year. CSCE will be having their installation of their executive officers tomorrow with the high school, with our normal CSCE meeting. And our treasurer is Nikki Wilana, communications officer Jackie Parker, corresponding secretary Thesa Zuziak, reporting secretary Dorinda Klein, second vice president Cindy Kimble, first vice president Elizabeth Phillips, and myself as president of the other two years. And as you can see, there are a couple of new names to our list, which gives me great pleasure because there's more responsibilities and duties that can be distributed. And Elizabeth Phillips and myself will be attending the Insurance University in San Diego, March 2nd and 3rd, and that is put on by CSCE. We've gone the last two years and found it really informative and as usual, and I say this with all sincerity, we do things really the right way and we're very much transparent in the way we even conduct our, you know, insurance meetings, our things that we do. And people are like surprised, well, you do that, you have this, you know, and it's, it really is interesting when you get together with other groups from other districts. And many of them are great districts, so I'm not saying that, but we are really far, small sized, really cutting edge. So I appreciate that because that's because of everyone at the table. And our principals and other support staff.
Okay, we now have representatives from organizations, I imagine you're not recognized. This meeting hasn't been retained yet for a few days of school hours, so you want to board members and I made a few notes that why you didn't leave your school power meeting, right? Back in December after our meeting.
Back in December, yes, we did, oh my gosh.
Oh wow.
It's been a long, it's been a long few weeks since my college got our home. We do have the school power meeting, which informed and prepped for their dinner dance, it's always informative and it's nice to see that supporting initiatives.
Carol.
And then I'm going to report on my CSCE stuff and I am going to hand these. Each, each time I go on these, this is my earlier. Which seems to be much more important topics, sessions around social emotional support. And it's really useful to learn what other districts are doing and how to prepare, you know, how it aligns with information. And one of the sessions I attended covered new legislation in relation to human trafficking, which is what I just handed out. And it all began January 1st, the law. And I came actually to the different fund of teachers already talking about in corporate classes and things that are done and and I think you guys were being so proactive, probably. And all that, staying abreast, I know they actually address the laws, but being proactive and having. And so that was wonderful. Right, you always feel like you're already chasing it. Like, mustn't tell you something new. And then I did attend a media conference with the last stateful meeting for social and emotional and had a deal with all the counselors and working out how to roll out capability, they took the same test, talked a lot about parents. And I put details in there of what would bring up for parents, got the call. And they're all working together, my favorite was elementary school ones, were competitive with each other. The middle school, high school, I think they were fellow high schoolers, they were working together then. It was nice to see, wasn't it? On this missing piece of the puzzle.
Well, you and I both went to with the CCA. It was a, it was a rather long meeting, but informative.
Right.
We've gotten the last part of the CTE grant, or it's going to be doled out soon. There is an assembly meeting, state assembly meeting on the 7th of February and I believe you have that information that is going to discuss the re-issuing of the grants, which I think really needs a support because without that, a lot of the programs that have added will have to be either cut back or discontinued, which I think is unfortunate because so many of them have been so well attended. The fall schedule is out, it's great that we're, the kids are starting to join these health, or the tenant student organization, one is the Health Occupational Students of America and then there's Skills USA, which is for auto shop. Or, no, not auto shop, that's what I call it, but anyway, so, but they, they really recommend that kids get involved in those particular organizations to help just help them in the future with their plans. They have elementary school left, we've got that already. There's new aviation careers that's going to be at Sora and it is, it's going to be after Bell, so if our, any of our kids have any interest, I'm sure that it's already been played out and so good over there. Anyway, if you have any, if you want to know anything, I have some of the classes that are added and what do we have? So these guys, I want to see some of this, I'll just give this to Victoria, if you guys had any interest in looking at this, this is actually the enrollment, which is interesting. We have really, really high enrollment for the size of our school, so we can be very proud of how hard it is and that's great. Yeah, you'll want me to write that, you'll want me to type that out for you, so I will type that out and send that to Victoria, since this is what my writing is like. But yeah, I'll do that, I'll get that out and I'll link that to her. And otherwise, me, that was all I did. Oh yeah, we, yeah, oh yeah, we, Kilda Jones is going to be president again and you're going to be P. And she was at that meeting, which is interesting. She in the morning, which is fine, it's okay, she was, yeah, she was a big nice woman. I went to meeting, Peggy was there, so I don't need to say that there for that. And the other one I went to, Carol was there, so, okay.
Thank you, and I have not attended anything since, as far as assignments since the last meeting, so.
Not very good at the school power meeting. Again, I appreciate the board members that were there in their roles and their new roles, and parodying and thanking community hurdles with school power. We had our district office quarterly meeting, which we host here for all the district office staff, just providing general department updates, so that happened between the last meeting and break, so just a little bit of time there. That was a busy time for everybody. I did sit, I was asked to sit in the fire chief interviews for the city of Wounded Beach, so that was a great opportunity. They follow very similar processes that we do, they had a professional panel and then they had a community panel, we blend ours together a little bit and we don't separate them out, but just impressed with the process and it was appreciated that I was able to take part in and help out, so. Long day, but lots of, lots of fun stuff, so. The LCAP survey closed and we're starting to get some preliminary results, which we'll come back and share with, but more on a future date, we've just got really preliminary information, so. I'm still working through the tabulations of that information, but we were able to get, again, a good subset of responses, we have the overall response rates. And we're happy to see that we have continued to grow in our response rates. And the California Helping Kids Survey is going to be coming to you tonight for approval and we will be moving forward to talk about that in the very near future as well. And as Member Brown pointed out, there is some discussion about an assembly bill to continue to fund all the CTE pathways. And so I've asked Ms. Roman to provide the generic layer of support that she will be working in school services to create and I'll bring it to. As Member Brown pointed out, it's a very important component of what we provide, yes, it's a small slip of funding directly at Wounded Beach Unified School District. However, our students get to take part in a very well-run program in conjunction with the cash flow.
Thank you. So thank you for attending and participating in our holiday open house and for the staff who were also able to attend. And it was a great celebration as usual, packed house. And we were able to honor our employees of the year, which is always a nice thing to do, we surprised them earlier that week. And Margaret and Sarah were able to join us and come out and do that at the school sites, but then we get to honor them, you know, so freshly after that announcement, here we're in front of their peers, which is a nice opportunity. So Laura Silver is our teacher of the year from Thurston Middle School and Chris Landrum is our classified employee of the year and she is an instructional assistant at Top of the World. And so we're going to move them forward to the next level of the process at the county. So hopefully we'll learn something in the spring about that. And I wanted to say thank you to the HR team plus Victoria for planning and implementing all of the holiday open house festivities. They're kind of a small team to put on that type of an event and sure, they did all the food themselves, so. Quite another day for me to really nice job.
I just want to give kudos to Brian Zeta, there were a lot of projects that we were able to complete over the, I say that we as if we did it, but.
We know where he works.
But there were a lot of planned projects that we were able to accomplish and a few unplanned as per usual. In addition to that, he completed our facility inspection tool and that is a very comprehensive database of all of our school sites and every single building, every single classroom. It's not an easy thing to do and he did it and he did it in record time, he beat you by a day. So I want to give him kudos as well, but I won't be doing it each year to try and beat that day back, but I appreciate all of what he did right.
Thank you.
Hi, happy new year. Just before we left on break, the audience are led, relaxed, so I wanted to thank Debbie Kennedy for coming, she brought students and that always has such a nice way of warming up a room, but it was a packed house. And so kudos to Debbie. Today, our K-12 pilot instructional materials group met for the first time for history of social science, so we're excited about that. Sometimes they had a hard time getting in the door because the rain was pouring, but we're really glad they all came. But dyslexia and inquiry PDs are again, starting up after school, these are led by teacher leaders and proves the point that oftentimes the answer is a number. So we've got some extraordinary teacher leaders supporting us enough, so thank you for your support.
Thank you, I'd like to hear that answer when we're using our fellow resources. We have set calendar and motion to approve, so if any, if any, if any, anything to pull off. Then I'd ask for motion to approve, set calendar items A through J, so that, okay, are there any questions, free questions? And then you can all comment on the things that found, just back to session. Jeff, can I ask you that one question?
Yes, Brenda, I would just like to point out to the board, there's a very large mark on there, a little over $200,000. That's for RJNC company and that's the contractor for Top of the World Elementary School. So it's one of our final billings as they finished up and they built the previous one.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Carrie Spivey. We have several information items tonight, first one is, you want to report?
Yes, we have no complaints to report, this is just a regular routine reporting.
Thank you. Our next item is report on temporary interim transfer, six million initiated on September 2, 2017. As we turn to special reserve and non-capitalized way, 2017, I assume, 2017.
President, thank you, as you know, for cash flow reasons, we borrowed from 2017 for ourselves. We received our first large property tax installment, therefore we're returning $6 million of this borrowed from 2017 back to the general fund as of December 11th.
Thank you. Ken and I are sticklers on that, so we always appreciate it that it's done, hopefully. And recorded. Our next information item is monthly financial update.
Thank you, President, there is not much to report for the financial on monthly financial report as it reports back for November. You'll see a different report at the next board meeting that will show the December monthly report, that's to show the interim transfer back that we just told you about. However, I would like to discuss, as we look on page 77 of the board, and we see the surplus deficit spending, which is really the net change in fund balance. This is as reported on the first interim. And I think it's important to kind of put this in context as to what that means and especially with the timeline that we face in the budget cycle being first interim as we report it, so. I will briefly go through this presentation and hopefully clarify and of course be able to answer your questions in fact. So in this, we'll talk about the net change in fund balance and then the ending fund balance, which is really important for us, especially if you talk about the first interim. And just as a reminder, and we know this, but anytime you see a negative change in the net change fund balance, that means your ending fund balance will likely be lower. If it's positive, it's likely to be higher. And then what I really want to point out is, because we just had our first interim in court, you see a history here of as first interims from 1415 through today, what was reported in the net change in the fund balance. And then you see the projected ending fund balance. Now, this is important because this is all from first interim, which is the first real report for our budget cycle and it's a very difficult projection, but it's the most conservative of all the projections because we don't have a lot of the information that we use later on, and I'm going to give some history on this. It's because our revenue assumptions can't assume a lot of the grants that we receive because without source documentation, we're actually receiving that funding, we can't count it in our revenues. So our revenues are assumed to be lower than they actually will be. Our change in fund balance, the reason it's always fairly high is because we transfer a lot of money out of general fund into our reserves, which is required, but that's not going away from us. It's like taking the money out of your checking, putting it into your savings. So your net position is improving, although your checking account's going down. And the last one is many of the purchase orders, they're put in the system, they're encumbered, but they're not spent. We don't fully spend every purchase order to the full encumbrance amount and you cannot assume the rollover funds. So as we go forward to second interim and then budget development, you're going to see that gap of the net change in fund balance going from negative to positive. And historically, it's always ended positive and as I go back to this slide here, you can see that our net decrease in fund balance that's been recorded has been shrinking over the years as we're trying to further improve our fiscal strength. So although it's showing a, what we call a deficit spending at first interim, we've been improving this and even at the higher amounts in 1415 and forward, we've not had a year of deficit spending by the time we get into the next budget cycle. So as you can see, and I think one of the most important things is because that first interim, we're using our most conservative assumptions, we really need to pay attention to the components of our ending fund balance. We need to meet those requirements, those are the reserve requirements for your general fund, the smallest amount being a little bit of cash, which is required for operations. The one-time expenditures, that's above and beyond the reserve requirements, which are the economic uncertainty reserves and our routine restricted maintenance reserves, which you see at the last, which is 5.6 million. So even worst case scenario, even if you were to spend the 1.2 million beyond what was assumed in this first interim report, we'd still be able to meet a positive ending fund balance. And then our multi-year schedule of positive 18, 19, and 19, 20, which is why we have the positive certification on the first interim. So worst case scenario, we're still fine, but as I mentioned, in first interim, a small snapshot in time, at the earliest part of the year, a lot of those assumptions are built in to be intentionally conservative and so it'll improve over time.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just have just a comment, so the money we put into the LCAP to prepay, do, are we getting interest on that money then that applies toward our?
Reduces our liability.
Yeah.
And we could, yes, and we can take out that interest gain to help start paying the liability as well.
Okay.
I just actually had a conference call with CalPERS before break on that, to talk about when you can start pulling out and why you would.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I appreciate you playing this out, I think it's really important, this, I think there's some misunderstandings of what, you know, the deficit spending is and it carries, it carries that money with connotation, but that certainly isn't what we're hearing, you know, all the money that we've committed in the various reserve accounts to fund the things that we need to fund. Because if we, if we needed to, we could, you know, when the fourth is posted, you transfer that money into the general fund.
Yes. You're a very strong question.
Very strong, so it's good to make this clear, thank you. Now we have action items, our first action item, item 15, approval of student plans, which is achievement, all sites.
Yes, so thank you for your attention for this, our principals have done an extraordinary job. We appreciate their willingness to revise the SCFA's that we brought forward to you last April. We revise them with new student data, so our goals would be upstate and aligned to the school start, school year start. So you can see that some of the goals and highlights called out in here. And I appreciate the instructional services staff for their support of sites.
Any public comment? More questions? So, any, any comments for the discussion?
I just, I just appreciate that, number one, data, thank you, that there's actual data in there that we can look at and assess. And each one of these is individualized to the sites and I think that is so important. So it's not just some giant, okay, this is what we're going to do, each one of you looks carefully and critically at what your site needs and assesss your needs and I think that is just, I just, I just appreciate that. I appreciate that not one site fits all necessarily, even though we are one district, I just think it's important to note that, so thank you.
And I really felt the culture, like at each site, it's really, it's individual.
Yeah, exactly.
The culture that I stand in, and it's important to be special. And I just, I hope that they lead some sort of collection and sharing in digestible words.
Okay, I would echo what is, that was the same thought that I had when I looked at these highlights here, they were individualized. And I think that that is coming from support for our principals to do that, because that's more than, as sometimes happens, so it's, I think it's a, will I do mess with that? Nestle?
That is a flashback.
Is that for our version?
I don't miss that at all.
It's not there for five years.
Nestle.
Nestle.
It's not going anywhere.
Alright, sorry.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Carrie Spivey. Our next item, item 16, approval of independent contract agreements with Dr. Willander Card, co-teacher expert at the cost of $8,384.55.
Yes, so thank you, so I'd like to acknowledge Irene and special education staff that what we would like to do with your permission is bring out Dr. Card for a professional development day, but what we know is anything that's worth studying and learning about is certainly worth going back and doing double checks, so we have some coaching days built in as well to support our teachers with the connotation.
Any comment or questions?
How does the co-teaching model work, is it, is it a teacher and a helper or are they both actually teaching?
Two teachers. And so the planning is quite important and deciding in advance who's going to take what role and that they both lead, right? It's not one takes the lead and one is in the back as a helper, it's two teachers with striking expertise working together in a really powerful way.
So they co-assessing too then, or planning a whole thing?
I think those are decisions that are designed at the beginning, but, but oftentimes they can't.
Motion please, someone, second. Any further discussions? Thanks too for paying attention to the need to make it a solid process. Aye. Opposed. Carrie Spivey. Next item 17, approval of memorandum of understanding between University of California, San Diego and the Wounded Beach Unified School District for administrative coordination, item design, proctoring, and advanced analytics of the biannual California Helping Kids Survey during the 2017-18 school year at a cost not to exceed $13,000.
It is, so all that is to say that we do want to implement actually in a new way this year that's really thoughtful and allows support from UCSD. The good news is that it is, it would be fully funded, 50% of it is a reimbursement and 50% is support. But we have a strong interest to, I call out some particular support for low-income students, LGBTQ students, and we want to look at cessation with drugs and alcohol. So we're really excited to get started. Post-approval, we hope to begin the week of, I want to say January 29th.
Public comment or questions?
So will some of the questions be changed?
There are a few that we're leaving out, we cannot remove, my understanding is we can just modify.
We could add.
Add.
Thank you.
We can do what's called item design?
Yes.
You can answer that.
And how will these results be different than?
While helping kids support.
We wouldn't know what the results would be. The process is, we allow this a little more analytic ability, so we can, under the current system, we can't do the data analysis that we'd like to be able to do. So for example, the total number of students who answered a question in one particular way, what was their response on the next question or questions down the line? So for example, you might look at a question where a student may be feeling, and so they have a high use of alcohol or drugs that they've reported. And we would look at, okay, at that point, do they exhibit, what was their response to the question of, do they feel in Kingson School? So then we could do a correlation, because right now, we don't have that capability. So part of the focus of this is to allow us to actually have some more hands-on and work with the university who will take that information and allow, say, okay, can you, we can hear the correlations that we're wondering about and let us know what you find in those correlations and then we can share it back with them. So it does allow us to add a few questions here and there. But really for us, it's a matter of, now that we have this data, what does it really tell us?
Give more information for the client.
Because pretty basically, it was just here whatever it was.
So it really helped there.
It, it, it has, I've had some experience and it was very helpful to least identify, we knew that students who were transitioning or were struggling with their gender identity were bullied at a much higher rate than their peers. So, you know, again, correlation data, some of us would say, well, that makes sense, that, you know, you should know that, but however, it's important to show to this extent. And then we were able to say, you know, as a counseling team, pay very close attention, when you have your students going through this, just assume that they have a 60% chance of them are being able, you know, it's among the national averages, it's actually higher. So when you're working with these families and these students, be aware that that's probably something that's been going on and you may need to provide that as additional support. So, and that's the next step, so result wise, we're not sure exactly what that will look like, but it will give us some time and some ability to work with the university around that.
That's all great, but what, how are the proctors helping or does it feel like student to student answer them before without?
It's just part of the service that they provide as they do it. Because it's, they're working with the data themselves, the university places it out and proctor it to ensure that there's fidelity and implementation. So they train their proctors, they're not relying on a teacher or substitute who might be coming into the room and might not have a clue as to what they're doing on a particular day. And instead, they send out their staff to do it. And I find that most of the time, staff is very happy to have somebody else in the room to help proctor it. And all they have to do is sit back and they'll have the question that person's the expert, they should be answering how they answer questions.
And my assumption is then that, having done, obviously this is the first rodeo, so having done this, they, they will be able to also, if they notice something, they'll be able to say,
For sure.
bye-bye, if you guys didn't see this, this might be simple again.
Yep.
Questions? Second? Any further discussion?
I should say thank you for not making some terms. I guess we'll hold up the candidate.
I think, I think it's brilliant. I, you should have done, if it had been possible, you should have done that.
All this is paper. I oppose, Carrie Spilew. Our next item is item eighteen, alternative programs.
So at the, at the November fourteenth board meeting, I discussed the fact that as information item, there are some reasons that I wish the board would need to take formal action. On CLC closure, it was placing hiatus. The PTA can't move forward with their funds and transferring them and doing what they plan to do with the larger PK organization in our district without some official board vote on this, that they can go back to this case and this is what's happening. So to that, I bring it forward as for a vote to officially close CLC.
Other comment? Any questions? Some questions? Second? Any further discussion?
Just thank you for following through once again, doing what we said we would do, looking to see if we could, if there's anybody out there. I just think it's important that we, that we kept our promises and we did keep our promises. And I had a contact in the conversation with Chopat, who was on the board when CLC was established and very tied into that. And he said he, he has been following it, although he said from the periphery. But he, I spoke to him for about half an hour and, but he, he was going to come tonight, but left it up to me. And I said I would share his concerns. His concerns are that the district, he really feels that this is a place where alternative programs have a place. And that we not be closed to something coming forward, whether it be next year or three years from now. And so we had a little auto conversation about that. And I said I would share his concern, this is just not, not just closing this. And he is sorry to see this closed. And I explained to him about the lack of teacher interest on, because he sees it, as I stated one meeting, that for me, I would do it as a teacher. But, but he said it is challenging, he recognized it is challenging with that. So I just said that I'd pass it on. He did tell me, part of the reason I think he contacted me, that he'd been contacted by the Indy to write about it. And so he said he wanted to make it very positive. And he appreciated that, what I told him about the length of time spent delving into this. And particularly assuring him that there was nothing at the start, no intention of, you know, going back all the way to the planning with the new buildings identified as CLC buildings and the hiring of teachers for that program. So I don't know. I just said I would share that.
I don't agree with that, if there's something that came up that we want to know.
Yeah. It's just.
Be used in that way as well.
Right.
Yeah.
And before, before I was at Buffalo Board, he was on the board when they had public vice chair. So it's just, he just, and I also told him that you would have experience in providing, going to, you know, alternative programs at the high school level and.
I agree.
And I think that, I think we have open minds to that here. It is just.
Do they teach volunteers?
And I did, you know, I think sometimes something lends its course.
I think also that there's so many changes right now in this education field. If that's the right, that once that pedestal downs though, then things will percolate back up. I just think there's so many changes out there.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
opposed, Carrie Spilew. Our next item, approval of action. Approval of employment contracts for assistant superintendent, business services, assistant superintendent resources, public communications, and assistant superintendent instructional services.
At the November fourteenth meeting, I brought them forward and moved them back into information again because I was following our standard that I agreed and wanted to follow the board, which is to bring them to the board as information prior to. So I appreciate the board allowing me to bring these back for action tonight. The contracts are very similar in nature to the contract that was utilized for myself. Includes their salary schedule, which has already been board approved previously. It's already in the approved salary schedules, it's not any different, there's no increases in pay along with that, that's already been approved. It just places it onto an actual contract. It includes language related to notice of their term being at this point, January, be effective tomorrow, with a duration of twenty twenty June. And it also puts into stats the process by which we would have evaluations and bring forward additional years of service. So with that, I'm happy to take general questions.
Other comment?
Well, it's discussions, questions.
Sorry. I just, when did these come back up for a year? Just always people in the pressure.
Our standard of practice will be they're bringing them back in July, June, July of this next year. So when we review my, my contract, their contract would also be approved. So it would go in tandem with their evaluation, somewhat of my process. So their evaluation would take place. I would report to the board what the status of their evaluation is and I would bring it back to the board for action to add an additional year to their contract and any other changes that we would make at that point in time. So.
I had just asked about the years and it seems like we're in line with the other districts in Orange County. And it seems like we're in line with teachers too, having ten years. I mean, it wouldn't be fair to just have a year contract.
Questions please? Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mexican. Thank you. Initiative. All in favor?
Hi.
I oppose, Carrie Spilew. And then we have item twenty, one number request for items for next meeting, request for information of general comments.
I have a general comment. Okay, since I started out, I'll talk about. Very, very current and I hope that never happens in any community. Never the internet. But I have good statistics. If we look, let me think about two thousand seventeen, I have an capable or other state. Why not be a speaker, but it's probably the very best year in a long history of community. So I have this, which I can share, but I have statistics in this great article that I can share. So we need some global perspective of the progress that we've made and most important developments in our lifetime. Every day, the number of people around the world living in extreme poverty, less than two dollars a day, goes down by two hundred and seventeen every day. According to calculations by Max Frisler of Oxford University, who runs the website called Our World in Data, every day, three hundred and twenty-five more people gain access to electricity and three hundred thousand more people gain access to clean water. As recently as the sixties, the majority of human beings had always been illiterate and lived in extreme poverty. Now fewer than fifteen percent are illiterers and fewer than ten percent live in extreme poverty. Another fifteen years of illiteracy and extreme poverty mostly gone after thousands of generations. Where it is pretty much disappearing on our watch. I think, I think that was a. Think good for my influence people. It's really just another problem. And my kids no longer want to hear about it.
That's good, thank you. Let's see. Encouraged in general how many different groups we have in our city that are looking at mental health. And I know that St. Joseph's is doing a mindful parenting series. And they're also doing for students and their parents, a class on why do we make young people wait until twenty-one to drink alcohol? Another one on the vulnerable teen brain and the influence of media. And the third one, what you and your teen need to know about marijuana. And today, we had the community clinic put on a teen mental health forum. And Dr., let's see, his name is Tim Keegan. He consults for a lot of different school districts. He was, he was excellent, he was fascinating. But just to talk about one part of it, the media part, he had a lot of good statistics that went along with the amount of time that teens spend on some kind of media and, and depression and being tired for school. And not, that a teen who spends three hours a day or more usually gets less than seven hours sleep. Kids at two hours, they seem okay, they might get as many as nine hours sleep. So, you know, it got, got me thinking that, well, we want to, many people want the school day to start later, but maybe if they just didn't have so much technology, they didn't have sleep, I don't know. And I thought it was interesting today, not there, but that the two of the big Apple investors are calling for Apple to help families from keeping their kids from becoming addicted to electronics and that they want them to give some money to help with that. That's, that's it.
I have one more thing. Sure. So tomorrow night, from six thirty to eight thirty, the SUSE Q is a group called Real Talk, kind of like off of TED Talk.
Right.
It's about mental health tomorrow night. And Suzie Elgany and some other private people in town that are funding this and created it for just community members to join together and talk about topics. It's usually facilitated by some expert in the field and, and the topics range from what sort of communities really caring about. And so this will be mental health.
And mental health.
Yeah.
Let's look in that thing.
It's called Real Talk.
It's on the interface, the interface.
Yes, I forgot that one.
Oh, I just wanted to say, I don't know if you guys saw it, but that Steve Wallen was co-chair.
Yes.
And the regisseur for Girls of Country. And then we had a couple of girls on the first team, freshman Jessie Rose. And.
Yeah, right. Maybe camp too.
And then, you know. Not even in second team, but anyway, it was. And just wanted to compliment the concerts that took place during the week before the break, before our. And I also wanted to compliment again, the team, we did a great job of thanking them, the team that put on the Hollywood Open House for the staff, it is a lot of work. There was a lot of food and it's very much appreciated. I know the staff, they really appreciate it, they make a lot of compliments about it. And I wanted to just clarify with something that Jeff, what you were saying about tied in to your report on that. It's like when, when you said things aren't expended, always expended fully, but when they're in the budget, the same way. So if there's an amount, like for example, like for an attorney's firm, that's just the amount that we approve as a board approval, whether it's a not, you know, not succeeded unless you came back. But that may not be spent, it's just there and we have, I'm sure that's the way it was. But I think there is a little bit sometimes misunderstanding that if we put it, if we approve it, that it's automatically spent. There's a Sit With Me, something that my sister pointed out, because it's a high school girl that started, a website called Sit With Me. It's, she spent her ninth and fifth grade years eating lunch alone and not being treated well. And so she started this and it's, she's, it's a really successful app that kids can use. She created the app so that they, if they need. And then it's a particular school and groups will reach out to that person and say, you're welcome to come and sit with us for lunch. So basically, my sister was talking to me about saying, do kids really do that? I mean, do they really ostracize other kids? And she said, I don't remember, you know, when we were growing up. And I said, well, we were kids, I mean, if there was, we might not have noticed it. But it definitely does happen. And so that's just, I thought that was really an interesting thing for a student to have done, that solving their own problem, but also helping others. Then that's all I have, thank you. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, January twenty-third at six, but we have a joint meeting of the city that's in there at four here.
Here.
Quarter to five. Is that right?
Correct.
So I have a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor?